Before we start the meeting, Commissioner Hartline is going to lead us in prayer. Before we start the meeting, I'm going to ask Commissioner Hartline to lead us in prayer, please.
Father, we come to you right now and the first thing we want to do, Lord, is give you thanks and gratitude for the Father that you are and for all the blessings you give us, God, and that you just look over us and protect and guide us, God. Lord, there's a vast array of families, Lord, that's represented here today. I ask that you be with each of their families, God, that you guide them and protect them and those families, Lord, that are hurting and that are sorrowful, God. I ask that you be with them, send the Holy Spirit to be the comforter to them, Lord, that only you can bring that peace and comfort to, Lord. But right now, God, I ask that you be with this meeting because, God, we thank you that we live in a country where we can do this and that government is ordained by you, Lord, and we need to take that charge seriously, God, that what we do will reflect in which you ordain, God. But right now, I ask that you be with each one of us, Lord. Thank you especially for your Son Christ who came and died for us so that we might have salvation, and, Lord, we just give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need more chairs? This time I'll call the meeting to order. I'm sure that you do your call, please. Commissioner Feller?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Foster? Commissioner Toler? Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir.
Having the floor, we will consider the meeting in order. We do not have the minutes ready from the previous meeting to be approved. Just as an FYI. Kevin, you have any building permits?
Three this morning. First one for Barbara Niekiel, 042902636. It's for a shed, no flood plain issue, previously subdivided, recommended for improvement. Next one is John and Tammy Clark, 042502503, a motor home, no subdivision, no issues, recommended for improvement. Next one is for John and Wayne Morton, 0428025668, for a modular home, no flood plain issue, previously subdivided property, recommended for improvement.
Make a motion we approve all three permits.
Say.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir.
County finances, you've got something else, though.
How's our creeks holding up?
Creeks are fine, roads are what suffer. They're terrible, we're aware of it. The worst thing we can do with them right now is go graze them because all we're doing is incorporate a bunch of water into them and then make them moldering. What we're doing, the second worst thing we can do is move a 250,000 pound truck down to try to patch it. And so what we're doing right now is areas that are becoming literally unpassable, we're addressing those, but for the rest of them, we're waiting for somebody to weather. And we'll be grading and hauling on and earnest.
Thanks.
Anything else? You do, give me a call.
Thank you.
County finances, I don't see Darren, so we'll pass on by that. Old business, retiring health resolution, again, I think that's still being looked at and so forth. RFP for IT or...
I still need to meet with the sheriff and 911 to kind of, they have a more complicated system, so I need to actually go down there and look at it so that I can understand what they need.
Did everybody respond up here and get back with you on what's needed?
Most everybody has responded.
Okay.
Special event liquor license amendment, again, that's still being looked at, and I think we need to do some work with Tyler on that possible. Under new business, approval of bills, you had a chance to put over the bills. I have no question either than you.
I make a motion we pay our bills.
Say.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda is the resolution certifying persons required to file statements of economic interest pursuant to the Illinois Governmental Ethics Act. This takes place this time every year. It's mainly elected officials and some administrative people here have to file this form by the end of March. It's just a routine, normal thing that we do, so. I have a motion to adopt this resolution.
Make a motion we adopt the resolution. Economic interest.
Say.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda is a collective bargaining agreement between the ambulance service, Local 4857, and the county. I'm happy to announce we have that completed. It was voted on unanimously, it was negotiated in good faith. I'd like to thank Grant and Tom Banks, the steward, for all the help they put in on this. I'd like to have a motion that we accept this agreement and sign it.
Make a motion.
I make a motion to accept the agreement.
Say.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir.
Also relating to the ambulance service, I think everybody's aware, we have our new unit in service finally, very proud of it. We need to formally have a declaration to declare the ambulance we're retiring as surplus property. We're going to, basically what that means, we're going to try to sell it. We have a couple counties already interested in it, but we have to formally do this and we'll put it out there for sale. I need a motion to pursue that.
I make a motion that we put the ambulance up as surplus.
Say.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any supplemental attachments to be addressed?
We'll be okay.
Because it is getting late for it. I don't think we have any reason to go into exactly the session that I do.
I don't, I don't hear you.
Committee reports.
Just going to animal control, we've, Brandy Wheeler has turned in that she will be leaving us next week.
Yes.
We'll be looking to replace her.
Do you have anything? The last tourism meeting was uneventful, with the board, no request for money or anything. It lasted about five minutes. Any other business? Any office holders or anything they want to bring up? That coming.
I just had a question as far as with the budget from our last board meeting to see if you guys had made a decision on what I brought up to you twice as far as with Teresa, with the other person in my office, the staff that she's not going to be, well, she's going to be on medical leave, so I didn't know if you guys had made a decision when I'd asked to consider that.
I think we took it under consideration. I think, well, I mean, we'll just have to deal with it when the time comes. Basically, the only answer I can give you, I mean, is we're, I mean, the budget is going to be voted on Monday at special meetings, so, but we'll work with you on that.
Okay, because otherwise I'd be down two and there's just no way, I mean, with two incorporates at all times, I mean, I'd have three left on the floor and that's just, I mean, that's not going to, that's just going to be unreasonable.
We'll work with you whatever we have to do at the time. Anybody else? Sheriff, you have anything?
No, other than we've just been very busy, been in the schools a lot this week, left in this last three weeks.
I kind of figured so.
Committee for that, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Angela, you have anything? Terry, you have anything? Andy?
Yeah, I do have, for the ethics to fill, do you have these forms or Terry, or where do you get these to fill those out?
We have them in our office.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Public comments.
Good morning, President of the Board. Thank you. My name is Tom Sodowsky and I've lived in Union County for approximately 30 years. Some of you know my name, which I'm glad to see that because of not being, not being born in this area, it's nice, I really feel a part of this county and it's nice to know that I recognize and I thank your, your times for entertaining my questions that I have here. I'm here as a citizen and I'm just trying to understand how the budget got, who did the budget got, so I'd like to ask the questions of the board. One of my first questions is that the board was once a three-member board and now it's a five-member board. Can you tell me why this happened?
That was voted on by the people.
Right, I understand that, but I'm still trying to understand, yeah, I'm not saying anything was wrong with that, I'm just trying to understand why we went from three to five and why did this happen.
Well, I wasn't a part of that, but I think it, I don't know who brought it up, I can't tell you that, but I think it was felt that, you know, it needed to be a five-member board and since the three was put before the public and the public agreed, that's about all I can tell you.
Or the same logic is it's not good to have one, so the more people you can have to represent the public, the better, broader range of representation. Public felt that three wasn't enough. That's the only thing I can guess.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense to me, too. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand the set. So that probably happens, I've heard somewhere around 2012, 2013.
That's when Max and I, yeah, were on the board, is when we were elected to the board.
It was a five, it was changed to a five-member board then, so.
Okay, thank you. Another question that I have is, we're listed on the webpage as a commissioner form of government. Is this an accurate description of our government?
I'm surprised. Yes, there's actually two forms of government in Illinois, one's a township form of government, the other's a commission form, and I think there are 17 counties that are commission form and they are one of those.
I think Tyler actually has a map if you're interested in looking at which counties are which.
Okay, well, I was also looking at different, different forms of government and then there's also another form of government that I was reading about that's called the council administrative form of government, which I think is more what we are since we have an administrator, we have, at this, at this time, we've had Kelly Carter and now we have Angie as the administrator, so I think, I know that's what it says on our webpage, is that we are a commissioner form, but from all indications, and I don't, you know, that's really not a really big point, but I don't know if that's, you know, we have to at least accurately describe how we are, so, I don't, yeah, I don't know where to go with this.
What was the name of the earlier?
The, one of them is a council administrator. There's a commissioner form, which just asks commissioners. There is a council administrator form in which the commissioners actually appoint an administrator and in this case we have one, so I'm, I'm looking at it as we are more of a council administrative form of government. Okay, so, so that's changed. I guess you guys weren't aware of that, that that's a change and so that, so my next question is when, when we decided to change this form of government, was the public in form, but apparently you weren't aware that we've changed the form.
I don't really think we have. If we were, if we were appointing somebody who had complete authority, that might fit the bill, but I'm not sure that's, I know it's not happened.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so despite the indication of times of austerity provided by the treasurer's report in the last half a dozen commissioner meetings, the board of commissioners also hired a human resources director. These are my observations that I'm going to go with you now. The hiring of two commissioners of, since we voted, now the, now the community voted to do this, but we, in the last five years, we've hired two commissioners to a tune of $8,000 each, a county administrator and a human resources director at salary of $60,000 each, and with benefits totaling nearly $30,000 each, okay, we have increased the cost of the taxpayers to nearly $200,000. Okay, we're talking about, we're having a budget shortfall and I'm looking at this in five years, we've increased what county has to pay out to $200,000. The seemingly innocuous changes in our county governance has transformed a once prosperous budget that was able to build a surplus of over a million dollars to a budget of austerity resulting in cuts to office holder budgets. These cuts have diminished the services and rights that we as citizens are entitled to. For example, the state's attorney has willingly given up the state's attorney position, increasing the workload of the existing attorneys making speedy and effective prostitution more difficult. Our circuit clerk will also experience a staff reduction diminishing the ability of that office to function efficiently. Additionally, the county clerk will experience a staff reduction. This staff reduction is especially egregious in election year and will infringe upon one of our most basic rights, the right to vote. The action of the board over the past six years has not only caused the county to be in state financial difficulty, but has also caused toxic work environment. Our elected office holders and their staff are entitled to a harmonious work environment, allowing them to provide efficient and effective government services. I appreciate your patience and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. These are my observations.
We appreciate your observations, Tom. Thank you very much. We wish to take them into consideration.
Thank you.
Other public comments.
I have one. To follow up on what Tom said, one thing that I am sort of aware of with my history is the history of law enforcement in this county and the budgeting and the problems we've had, starting way back 100 years ago with when we got the merit system started and then the safety tax. Last, I think it was last meeting, Scott alluded to the problem, not only attracting officers, but retaining officers, and we all, I think everybody would agree, that is a priority in this county for the taxpayer and for you guys. He mentioned that one of the things that he felt like was a problem was the insurance, the family insurance, and it's not very good and it wasn't competitive with, with other agencies and so to follow up on what Tom said, I don't understand how you guys could approve, and I understand Chairman Toler and Mr. Foster are gone and they voted, I don't know, against those new contracts, but I don't understand how now that these contracts, I haven't seen them and now that they're public, I don't understand how, with that in mind, where that money could be used in a more efficient way, or at least for the priority of the taxpayers, between those two new positions in the, in their contract, they're going to get $13,618 increase. And I, explain to me how that can be when we're laying off? How, how could you justify, with all due respect, how could you justify contracts like that? I guess that's my big question.
Debbie, I don't, I mean, I, and I apologize, we've been down this road so many times and I personally justify their jobs because they're needed. And times have changed since 10 years ago, is all I'll say. I, I'm, I think we kind of had this conversation last meeting, again, to these same positions, justifying them, this, that, and the other. The board stands by its decision and that's it.
I, I realize you're tired of hearing about it, but, and let me say this, I did, I did research and until you guys pass it in the Open Meetings Act, we don't have a time limit on public remarks, but, you know, you can pass that one whenever you feel like it, but what we did not bring up were the, the contracts, because we hadn't seen them or I hadn't seen them, maybe other people in here were aware of them, but...
But again, from last meeting, we felt like we had certain employees on contracts that are not elected officials. We had certain employees on memorandums. We felt like that it all needed to be consistent, one way or another. So that's what we did was put it on paper as a contract instead of changing the two employees on, I mean, changing the other employees like the two that were on memos. End of story. I mean, the, the raises, the, the, their financial package was already there, still there, going to be there, so we, we put it in the form of contract. They're not, they're not going away.
So when, when you voted on it, it was already there?
Well...
No, I'm talking about the increases now.
No, we, we gave them an increase that we felt was justified for that contract.
Do you see the, you see my question?
I understand your question and...
The priority, just like we, you know, like, and you mentioned that after you've seen the workings in the sheriff's office, you mentioned that, you know, you understand how they're all, it's very short-staffed, et cetera.
I agree.
And we see Jim is on the merit board.
Right.
And I'm aware of how hard it is to attract and to keep, you know, good officers and we've got good ones and we want to keep the ones we have.
Well, I don't...
So that money, the, the connection is this money on insurance that's being paid on insurance and these $60,000 jobs, we go a long way on those insurance premiums.
Well, I, I don't, I understand where you're going with that and I appreciate that, okay? We will be putting out for bid this coming year for our insurance, we'll see what we can do. It skyrocketed last year, that's one of the big expenses we have, it went really up. If we can make a change with it, we will, if we can't, we won't. I, it, it, it's related, but it's not. Those jobs are there, okay? Taking away those jobs in order to increase insurance benefits is not going to happen. So that's, that's all I can say.
I will say that, that our human resource or our county administrator have set up meetings with entities to discuss, to see what we can do about our insurance. I mean, they've already been proactive on that. As a matter of fact, I was in the office the other day where they, they have set up meetings so that they can pursue that, so we're starting now to look at, because insurance is a problem and we know that, that it's going to go up and we have to make, we have to make accommodations for that, so I can tell you, Debbie, that they have been proactive in looking at our insurance and you said about the efficiency of government. We, we believe that by having these people in that, in these positions, we are becoming more efficient in the way that you reduce costs. Sometimes you spend money so that you can reduce costs because of efficiency and that's what, that's what I for one believe, that we've become more efficient in our government by having these positions and just to say again, on the insurance, they've already been proactive on that to set up to see what we can do, because that was, that was alarming to me when, when the sheriff said that we've lost people because of the insurance. Well, that's what I had to talk with, with these and we had to talk, saying, hey, if that is the case, then we have to be more marketable, we have to, we have to look into this. And since that conversation, they started those talks. So hopefully with our insurance, we can do something.
My other point, which you're tired of hearing, I know, is, you know, it's not something very inequitable about hiring positions that's starting at 60, or being $60,000 with four weeks vacation, when we've got law enforcement officers that have worked 25 years, don't make near that, don't have that kind of, and kind of vacation. It's not, it's not in the realm of this county's levels of employment or even Danny, you and I know from the state, oh, we had to work, what, 22 years to get four weeks?
Yep.
So I think there's just an inequity there of what was set as the level and I guess that's why I keep bringing it up, but it just doesn't seem there's something wrong there when officers are making maybe less than half that, so that's my statement.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just want to add to what Debbie said, it's not that I don't think that she was questioning having the two positions or if they were needed, it's that you guys passed agreements that incorporated raises until 2020. So you want our offices with our fee offices, which a lot of them are self-sufficient and we bring in a lot of fees to the county and they don't collect any fees. I know they may help with audit procedures or different things to help the county as better in a whole, so if you're going to incorporate raises until 2020, I mean, those raises would go a long way to even give us part-time employees. So as them, I would even think that there could have been something, you could have put them on a freeze, I mean, you gave them substantial raises, 2,500 each, after a few months of being here. And then now they're going to get another $13,618.14. I don't feel that's fair. It's not that I'm saying they're not needed or the position shouldn't have been created, but it's how it came about that you guys would actually pass an agreement and then you want four positions to be gone, that are fee offices that generate revenue for this county that help fund their positions. I think that's wrong. I mean, as taxpayers, I don't see how you can justify that. And as an employee, I wouldn't be able to face the public to come in knowing that jobs are being laid off and I'm getting a $13,000 raise over the next three years between two employees. I mean, that's my opinion.
The raise is 2% by the way, so.
But over three years between the two, based on salaries and the benefits, just the dollars, $13,618 between the two. I mean, it's on the public website, we've figured it out. And I just don't think that with you guys entering that agreement, I don't think you took into consideration the lack of our offices and more fee offices and we have to collect, I mean, I have to input all the court orders. If I don't have the people to put the court orders in, the money's not going to go to the treasurer, I'm not going to have the staff to reclass the bonds, to sign the bonds from the sheriff, I'm not going to have the staff to do that. So before you guys did this cut and passed this agreement, you guys should have really came to visit the offices or see it as a whole instead of protecting the four positions. Between those two, leaving the IT in to do our, I know that you haven't said that that's what you're going to hire, Matt, but it's still in the budget or the new person and then Darren's created a position that's also a non-union. And then in our agreements or their union negotiations, they have... And then in our agreements or their union negotiations, they have to be laid off for financial hardship, but that's not put in the new agreements for them. So they're protected for three years unless if it's for discipline or, you know, for cause. And I don't, I don't see how you can justify that.
Amen.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
For one thing, just to point out the fact that the position, as far as my position is concerned, I know the, the previous gentleman that had it, Kelly Carter, had switched us over on our insurance. It saves us a couple hundred thousand dollars a year by being self-insured. Right there, a pace for the salary for this position and the human resource position.
But it depends on...
It also, just the fact that this past year, the board has elected for me to do the budget instead of paying the auditor $20,000 to do the budget. So that in itself has saved the county money. So these positions have actually saved the taxpayers' money, not cost the taxpayers' money.
I understand that, but in the same sense, we're also a fee offices. I slept and you have it in your budget for the public, $140,000 just in clerk fees alone that I'm turning over. So you guys as a county for my general fund with my salary, seven employees, my whole entire office giving me $32,000 for the entire year to run my office. That is so generous of you. $32,000 for my whole entire office. Eight people, the whole entire service, maintenance, travel, office supplies, everything, $32,000. Because the document storage and the automation pay for my other stuff, which I'm the ex officio of that and that's also line items for my court orders that's governed by statute that also gets to run my office. So out of general fund, that's what you guys are putting in my general fund, is $32,000.
In addition to the 140?
No, my total is $172,000 in general. Take off the 140.
I said in addition to the 140, you were given the 140 plus the 32.
Which is clerk fees that is governed that I have to be, those are for the earnings of the office.
To run the office.
Right. So I'm turning those over to the treasurer as my fees I collect. So with my 140 that we collect in my office, you guys are only giving an additional $32,000 to fund my entire office. So when you start looking at all the other offices of what you're giving to fund them, mine's pretty much a self-sufficient office and funds itself besides the $32,000 because I pay also for four insurances and all their fringe benefits as well.
I've, I've heard that song about Kelly Carter before and how he saved money with insurance. And I thought, yeah, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good story. But at the last meeting, Scott Howard was talking about he can't get officers, they leave our government because of their poor insurance. So yeah, we may have saved money, but what was, what was the cost of that savings?
You're talking about two different insurances. Scott is referring to health insurance and the other was for workers' compensation insurance. Completely different insurances.
I've heard that before too and when Kelly Carter was hired. And we did a FOIA request wanting to see because he was, we were told, I don't think by you guys, but on a different board, we were told he saved in his first week $100,000 for the county. And we did a FOIA request and nobody could ever find that he saved $100,000. Now, maybe since then it has showed up, but it didn't after that, we marked his name. So we had, we had a FOIA request and it answered from Raleigh, so...
I do, I, I don't know about that. I don't, I didn't know about the FOIA request or anything about that. But I do know that since that we became self-insured on that, that the premiums that we were paying on that, we are, we are saving money there.
And I get that, but that's just where I'm back to the agreements that you would pass substantial raises, that you would expect us to lay off and be short-staffed. When we turn over a lot of fees every month to help fund the county, so I just feel it's a slap in the face to all of us that you want us to do more work with less, but you all want to do less work with more.
Less with more.
Yeah. Yeah, because you guys have a party of seven. I don't think it's funny. I mean, you have five commissioners and you have a human resource and an administrator, so I don't find what's funnier humor in my comments.
The way you're structuring the numbers to ignore savings but focus on your own department is, is interesting.
Okay, then I have a question. How is there going to be accountability that the, those two positions, their savings, will actually get turned back into our departments and our offices that run our county? And that it's not going to get turned back into another raise for two positions or, I mean, how is there accountability there?
That's a good question.
If you say you're saving money, where is it going to? It should be going to the offices that do the work of the people.
Exactly.
Mind if I answer a question real quick?
Go for it.
Three main ways. The first one I would say is the budget's being passed, which is at public for what now, 13 days?
It's not passed yet.
It's not passed, which is why, because it's just been posted.
Sorry, the approval, the approval to post the budget, which has been posted for 13 days. The second way that I would say is you have every right to FOIA as much information as you would ever need for cost savings or whatever. If there are issues with that, as Debbie said, we definitely need to address those with the current FOIA officers, however, we just lost one. I'm not sure if everybody's aware that Raleigh was our FOIA officer and to bring him on to do the FOIA work is now costing us money as an independent contractor. Did everybody, is everybody aware of that?
Not as an independent contractor, he's still on payroll part-time.
So the third way is the elections.
Yeah?
Yeah!
Does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, I'll see you at the, at the booth.
Sounds good.
All right, I have a question as a Union County resident and a taxpayer. What I'm hearing, and I might have missed a lot of it, but coming from someone who has been burglarized, and I mean burglarized, I don't know if anybody misremembering you had been, it's awful feeling, but it sure was nuts to know that my Union County Sheriff's Department was able to take care of it and had the resources to take care of it. I personally think that's way more important than somebody, and the way I understand it, you, you pay $20,000, is that what you said, for somebody to come and do? Okay, so take that other $40,000 and give it to the sheriff's department, give that person $20,000, you're still saving money.
That's not the only thing that the administrator does.
Do you see what I'm saying though? I think...
If that was, if that was the only thing the administrator does, I would understand your point, yes.
Right, so I think some more money needs to be funded somehow, somewhere. And I'm not the one to set and figure it out, but somebody needs to for those other people that do get burglarized. There's a lot more. When I had to go in there to Tiffany's office and take care of paperwork, when I had to go talk to that person that did investigating and the fingerprinting and all the other stuff.